I'd like to call our meeting to order. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education, in accordance with the State sunshine law of New Jersey, had a quick notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 21st, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Eldridge-Howard?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swusson?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we start with the approval of minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting of February 11th, 2019, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to do something slightly different on the executive minutes due to the fact that there was some very confidential information in our executive session. Ashley will give them out in a hard copy and we'll collect them up after we have a minute or two to read them and pass them back to the Assistant Business Administrator. Thank you very much. Everybody good?
Looks like we're good, Judy.
Okay, I'll take a motion and second to approve the minutes from our executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes. One objection?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. We go on to correspondence. We received nine pieces of correspondence. And now we go for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to share some great news from around the school, from around the district, with our board and our community at large. This past Thursday, Hillsborough High School Mock Trial held a special banquet to celebrate its 25th anniversary. In attendance were past and present members of the team, as well as co-advisor, Mr. Bob Fenster, and Ms. Julianne Anderson, and many invited guests. The evening included a dinner and a wonderful video compilation showing the team over the past many years. It was a true honor for me, as well as five of our board members, to attend this wonderful celebration. Congratulations to the team on 25 years of hard work and success. I am also pleased to share that Mr. Bob Fenster was recently chosen as one of 10 finalists for the Princeton Prize for Distinguished Secondary School Teaching at Princeton University. Each year since 1959, Princeton University has honored at its commencement four outstanding New Jersey teachers from both public and independent schools for their contribution to the lives of the state secondary school students and to their communities. Each high school in New Jersey is invited to forward one nomination of an exceptional teacher or team of two co-teachers who have demonstrated highly effective engagement with their students in the teaching and learning process, dedicated service to their school and community, and significant commitment to their own professional growth as lifelong learners. Bob and nine other finalists from schools around the state will next be observed and interviewed, and from those 10, the final four winners will be chosen. In addition to being recognized at Princeton University's commencement, the winners will also receive $5,000 each, and the school will receive an additional $3,000 for the purchase of library books. In addition to co-advising mock trial, Bob teaches courses in U.S. history and government and politics, and also co advises the Hillsborough High School Model Congress, Model UN, and Amnesty International Excurricular Organizations. He is also spearheading the upcoming Borough for Bo concert on March 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Hillsborough High School. The concert will bring together over 20 Hillsborough alumni for a night of acoustical music performances to raise funds to support a school in Bo, Sierra Leone. Congratulations on this very distinguished honor, Bob. I'm also pleased to share that Hillsborough High School's principal, Ms. Karen Bingert, has been asked to participate on a statewide panel with the Commissioner of Education to discuss the 20th century high school graduate. The panel will be held on March 7th and moderated by New Jersey Spotlight CEO John Mooney. The panel will seek insights into what a high school should accomplish for its students and community. They will also delve into the state and community roles in determining what a diploma should stand for in our state. This event is the first of a four-part New Jersey Spotlight Roundtable series entitled "Defining New Jersey High School Diploma." Congratulations, Ms. Bingert. I know that you will represent Hillsborough and our community very well. Two weeks ago, CBS News visited Hillsborough High School to speak with Raiders head varsity coach Kevin Carney and sophomore football team player Sean Levinitis on an approved proposal by the Executive Committee of the NJSIAA to reduce contact in football before and during the season. This proposal, if finalized, will set the strictest limits on tackling in the country. These changes will not take effect until the Executive Committee has a second reading of the proposal in April, when it votes again. Thank you, Coach Carney and Sean, for representing Hillsborough so well. On February 15th, Team 75, the Robo-Raiders, held their annual ship day that formally concludes the building of this year's robot. The season officially began on January 5th, when the team learned about the 2019 First Robotics Competition Challenge entitled Destination: Deep Space. Since kickoff, the team has been working hard to design and build this year's robot for the competition season. It's an honor to attend the ship day, to see the culmination of the students' hard work and dedication to this year's challenge. This year, the team was also honored to have Board of Education member Jean Trujillo attended, Assemblywoman Olivia Holmes, and Senator Kip Bateman were in attendance. Congratulations to the team on the end of an exciting build season, and best wishes to you as you start your competition season. On February 25th, Judy Haas, our board president, and I were honored to be invited to meet with Assemblyman and Speaker of the Assembly Craig Cogley. Also in attendance at this meeting were our Assemblymen Andrew Zwickor and Roy Fryman. I hope that I may speak on behalf of Judy Haas when I say that we were truly appreciative at the time these assemblymen spent with us discussing the unique funding challenge facing Hillsborough Township Public Schools. We are looking forward to continuing our conversation with these legislators and hope that they will help us find some relief from the financial issues that we're facing. And with that, I turn the mic over.
Okay, thank you very much. I will forego my report and move right on to committee reports. Lorraine, for education.
Thank you. The Education Committee met on Valentine's Day, and all members were present and were in some sort of red or pink. So, we reviewed five policies and their accompanying regulations. All of them were recommended for approval for first reading and are on tonight's agenda. We also reviewed a new course curriculum for Special Education Social Studies Concepts III that also is on tonight's agenda. We're recommending the course title change from Women's Corral to Treble Corral. That is on tonight's agenda as well. We approved the textbook, Ape for Advanced Placement Government and Politics. Again, that is on the agenda tonight. And we also are recommending new course proposals on tonight's agenda for Technical Education, Community Help Desk, so something similar where we're training our high school students to be able to help with some of the computer issues that might be faced in the high school, and the software as well, as well as Play Unified Health and Physical Education. We reviewed a draft of the calendar, which is also on tonight's agenda for discussion and potential approval. We discussed the 2019-2020 budget and the referendum, and we also reviewed our committee norms, since we have new membership on the committee. We also discussed some informational items, including the high school being chosen by the New Jersey Department of Education to be surveyed as part of the student health survey. So there will be forums going out to parents for permission to administer that survey. It's a little bit like the Pride survey, except it also talks about sexual behaviors and things like that, that were not covered by Pride. And that is an anonymous survey. We won't even get our schools' results separated from anybody else. It's just to inform the whole of New Jersey about where things stand in the state. And we also discussed very briefly a request from a parent to increase time for recess at the elementary schools. So that is it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Greg, for operations?
Operations Committee met on February 20th. We had several items on the agenda. The first one was the current contract with Armark for supervision of our Buildings and Grounds Department. And we're looking at some options moving forward on that. That'll be an ongoing discussion. Nothing really final to report on that. We looked at five policies. Four were mandated, one is optional. So, three of the mandated ones are going to move forward. The fourth one, we're looking for some clarification on, even though it's a mandated policy, we still had some questions on it. And the one optional policy about memorials, we already have policies and practices in place that serve the same purpose. So we're not going to move forward the memorials policy at this time. So you see the three that we did recommend on for tonight. Most of the meeting was taken up with our architect from EI, Mike Wozni. He presented a first look concept plan of how a new high school could fit on an 80-acre plot lot. Just so, nothing about how the high school is actually going to look, just conceptually how you can fit as much physical space as we want, a 400,000 square foot high school, all different playing fields that we'd like to have, the amount of parking that would be needed, and if this could all fit. And he showed a plan where it could fit, but certainly a lot of changes will happen for that, but it can be done. It can fit, and it would look nice. We had our transportation consultants came in, also with our transportation supervisor, Lisa Bennett. She was in also to talk about the amount of courtesy busing that we do in the district, above and beyond what's required by law, and some options that we could have going forward if we wanted to reduce some courtesy busing. There are a lot of different options for courtesy busing, and some of it would be rather benign, eliminating some of it. Some of it would be more serious. We probably wouldn't look into that. It's an ongoing thing also. There's no proposal yet at this time for that, but it was a good discussion. We took a look at the food services bid. So every few years, we go out for food service contract. We don't have to stay with the same provider, obviously, for food service for the schools. And the committee made some suggestions for what we'd like to see in the bids. I shouldn't have said now, right? Am I allowed to say them? I don't know if this is a bit confidential, no? All right, so some suggestions were more farm-to-table options, more local food, lower carbohydrate meals, some less sugary drinks, and some portion size. These all came from Ms. Trujillo, by the way. I think just about every, all of these things. So, they were a good discussion. It was a good discussion, actually. And I think that's all we had. It was a good meeting, though. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, for Human Resources?
Thank you, Judy. We met on February 11th before our board meeting of that night. We began by reviewing two policies and regulations, which will be on tonight's agenda. We then discussed the need for an interim administrator, reflecting some action that we will be taking tonight. That will be an ongoing discussion about the interim administrator replacement. We also continued our discussion about the budget and referendum as we go forward with the plan and what some of the impacts might be from that. And finally, we discussed some legal and regulatory impacts that may come onto us from New Jersey Earn Sick Leave Update and the changes to minimum wage. And that was our meeting. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much, Chris. Are there any questions or comments among the board in regards to committee reports? Yes, Jane?
Regarding the Education Committee report, I just want to address the issue about recess. Can I ask, did you get any input from elementary school teachers?
At this meeting, we were just being informed by Dr. Schiff that this discussion had just taken place and that they were going to be looking into it because, and Dr. Schiff, maybe I'll ask you to address the issue of recess being counted for gym time and how we might think that we were going to get information on regarding that.
Yeah, there was a new law that was just passed, requiring a particular amount of time for recess in grades K through 5. We're currently compliant in that area. But what also came out as part of that new law was when an administrator can actually remove recess. So those options have changed, and it will be very rare at a time when removal of recess is used to check behavior or to put a child and happen to do additional work. That recess is prioritized, that physical activity, trying to get the kids outside, is now codified in law. We haven't had large conversations with elementary principals or with teachers at this time about it. We're currently consistent with the law. I think, all things being equal, we would love to have more time for recess, but we don't want to have less time for other things either. So our day is packed the way that most elementary school days are currently packed.
I just want to, there's been studies where they say that movement and more recess time really is beneficial to their learning, and arguably, yes, that would take away from instruction time, but maybe with the recess, that could make the instruction time more efficient. And if not, maybe increasing the recess time per se, maybe build in maybe five minutes, maybe one or two other times, just for kids to get up and move around, not necessarily go outside, but there can be a lot of value to that.
That's actually not uncommon. Elementary teachers do do that and take time out in addition to recess to stretch and to sometimes get some air, they bring the kids outside. That's not uncommon in elementary schools.
We had some discussion about that, but people, I mean, I know that Ms. Myers in Triangle School did yoga with his kids a couple of times a day, and there's lots, as Dr. Schiff said, there's lots of teachers who already integrate more motion into the classroom, which I think is a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, too, that I know a lot of teachers are now, they're doing their brain breaks, and just even if it's two minutes, anywhere between two and five minutes, I think a lot of teachers have been instructed to make that happen in their classroom, to get everybody moving, because we're not sitting, so I'm hoping it works.
Probably would work well in the older grades, too.
They need it.
Maybe some of our longer board event meetings, too.
Yeah, really? We could do that. Let's see. Okay, so far so good. So, are there any other questions? Comments? Okay, we'll begin to comments from the public. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that's on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So I will take comments on the action agenda.
Good evening. Tom Isabella, Nine Upper Shanah Court. I can assure you, this evening will not be filled with the fireworks that occurred maybe a couple of weeks ago. I was all fired up, and if anyone wants to go and look at my comments, they can certainly look them on YouTube. But why I'm here tonight is, I guess, moving forward, looking to the referendum in the fall with the new high school. Where is there talk about where the new high school will be built? If that goes ahead, where exactly are we looking to build the high school? I guess that's my main question for this evening. Just curious to know where that might be. So, I guess if someone wants to answer that.
Yeah, we're currently discussing options at this point. Those negotiations are private. I anticipate that, I'm hoping actually, that we can begin talking publicly in March. So, you know, next month is when I anticipate we can do that. And by the way, you reminded me to remind the public that we have an important referendum that's coming up actually on March 12th. That referendum is for full-day kindergarten, as well as financial stability. This is a very, very important referendum. The consequences of passing the referendum are having full-day K and maintaining current programs. Consequences of failing it are reductions of positions of close to 50, 5-0, plus increasing fees, and actually looking at some reducing courtesy busing, which was actually reported out of the Operations Committee. So I encourage everyone to come out and vote. If you need any additional information on this election and what it's all about, please visit our website at https.us. That's www.htps.us, and click on the icon indicating Investing in Our Future.
And may I, if I may just follow up, I guess, I was just curious to know, was there ever a consideration, looking at the budget as a whole, you know, to look at maybe other fat or other areas where we could trim, instead of talking about cutting 50 staff members? I think, as I said last meeting, I felt like it was a false choice. It was a scare tactic, that, you know, if we don't pass it, then the sky will fall, and all these people will lose their jobs and all that. Was there ever a consideration to look at things beyond, you know, talking about 50 staff members reduction and other things like that?
Absolutely. And let me reiterate what I said last time to you again this time. This is not a scare tactic. This is what will happen if the referendum fails. The 50 positions, a reduction of close to $5 million going into next year's school budget from what we anticipate we need, is not something that you can just adjust for. These are real positions, real programs, real fees that would be increased. We have shrunk our operating expenditures from any discretionary line that we have. Actually, over the past seven years, we've been doing that. We have done so much that we're actually now in the position of reducing surpluses, and that's one of the issues that we're facing. We actually went in and took surpluses in order to spend on our operating budget, which is unsustainable. You can't continue to do that year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Sarachi, Simonsen Lane. Just kind of just following up on, I guess, where Tom was going with the school budget for next year. Because I know with the referendum has come up about, you know, with some of the, you know, past fiscal policies, I'm going to say, have come home to roost. I think some of the things to consider for next year, for your next school budget, really needs to have some fiscal policy reforms. Meaning, to follow, during my time on the Township Committee, we set a policy of a hard 2% cap. The way to do that and to achieve that is to get control of your operating expenses, which is usually, unfortunately, is your labor costs. I think some of the contracts, and I know you're into another round of contract negotiations, really need to take a look at that as hard. You cannot be giving increases over 2%. That's unsustainable. I think that's where we've gotten ourselves into a situation here, where you have maxed out your caps in all areas. I think, again, going forward, if there's any current contracts, to open up negotiations on those current contracts. We did that on the Township Committee when the cap dropped from 4 to 2%, and we got concessions from all collective bargaining units to maintain that. And just to show that, you know, the Township Committee never had to take any exceptions over those to meet the cap. Actually, in the last three years, the Township Committee had two straight, flat tax rates, and last year, the tax rate decreased. That wasn't by accident. And we even issued or voted on a bond for eight and a half million dollars, and that wasn't going to affect our debt service, because we were very careful with debt service leading into that. I think going forward, I know there's, you know, want of a new high school. I think you really got to take a hard look and see, what do you really need? Meaning, don't build excess. Build what you need to go forward that could be expandable later on. One of my past companies, we got a new corporate office. We didn't build an excess. It was designed for later expansion. Just build as you need. And then also going forward, I understand that there's going to be, you know, a cut in aid. Again, if this referendum goes down, and, you know, a lot of that is to cover up for that projected lost aid going forward, do what the fire districts have done. They go out every year and they ask, you know, for what they need to exceed 2% every year, and, you know, sometimes the voters approve those measures, sometimes they don't. But please don't ask for those, you know, for those monies upfront, because I think that's where one of the issues are going to be coming up with this referendum. So again, I just ask you to just, you know, fund what you need, you know, not the nice-to-haves, but the must-haves. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving right along, we'll turn to the education agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, overnight field trips, course title change, new course, approve the new curriculum as listed, as well as new textbooks, and approve regulations that were reported out of committee, as well as the district calendar for 2019-2020.
Okay. May I have a motion in the second, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the education agenda? Yes?
I'd like to separate Policy 5756. So that's under 10.7, just that one policy.
And I have a question.
One minute, one minute.
So, the question is on 2431.3. Sorry, I didn't email earlier, but I believe that there was an option on that policy, and it wasn't checked off which one we were choosing. Is that not?
We actually, we shouldn't vote on that one because we did not review that in committee.
Yeah, it's not, it's actually not in the final copy of the agenda. It was actually pulled off.
Which one is that? I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, it's not listed there. It was listed in the earlier copy.
Oh, it is on mine. I printed it today.
We didn't review it in committee.
I printed it off the website.
Wait till Monday night at 7:00 to print your agenda. You'll be all set.
I printed it like when I'm in.
Do you want to discuss something that wasn't reviewed?
Nope.
Yes, Jane?
Regarding the calendar, I'm really glad that Martin Luther King's birthday, Martin Luther King Jr.'s day, is not going to be affected by snow days, so I'm glad we made that decision. And I think I noticed that Take Your Child to Work Day on April 23rd, I think it was listed in the list of holidays, but it's not going to be a day off. So, I just, to me, it looks misleading that it's still listed in that list.
We can make that edit. It was originally one that was in there.
Right.
In fact, we're going to make some of the total edits, and we haven't included that list in prior years, and we'll defer to the education committee on that. But for informational purposes for the board and the community as we're going through it, I thought it was important that you had that. But the first draft did have that as a day off that day, and after conversation with the committee, the final recommendation to the board was to be in-school on Take Your Child to Work Day, also to be out of school the Monday before the Christmas holiday.
And please be advised, we've gone from two to four snow days, so hopefully all those holidays towards the end of the year, and thankfully, Martin Luther King Day will not have to ever be used again. So, that was done with that in mind.
And I have a question about the policy number 5600, about student discipline. Sorry.
5600?
Yeah, I have a question. Trying to find. At one point, I think it's talking about the--
5600.
Oh, I'm in the wrong one. I thought it was in the right one. It was about punishing possible suspension or expulsion if a student assaults another student, and I was wondering, is there anything, is there a separate thing for when they assault a teacher or staff member?
Yes, there is.
That is a separate one? Okay. Thank you.
Or a member of the board.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the education agenda? Okay. So, we can move ahead with all items other than item number-- Policy 5756 in item 10.7, but for everything else, I'll take a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mrs. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll take a motion in a second for item 10.7, policy 5756.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Your comments.
Yeah, thank you. So, if you know me at all, you know what my objection is going to be to this, and it's around parental consent or informing parents. This is the transgender policy. It's an update of the previous policy, also 5756. This has a lot of changes in it. Look, gender dysphoria is a very serious matter. As I look at this policy, and I checked it through with, you know, I put it, I pulled it up on the computer and I searched for words like age, high school, teen, adolescent. Those words never come up once in this policy. This policy is for all ages of any student. The policy says the school district shall accept the student's asserted gender identity, and parental consent is not required. Now, look, I'm not a psychologist, and it very well may be, and it probably is, a good treatment for some children to have the affirmation from a school district about their chosen identity. But that's a treatment, and I don't think those treatment decisions should be made by us without consulting the parent. I think it's absurd that we could have, literally, on this policy, you could have a nine-year-old come in and assert an opposite gender identity, and we have to possibly make accommodation for that without, we're forbidden from telling the parent. Now, I know this is a mandated policy, and we have to pass it, but I think something has gone incredibly insane in this state if we don't involve parents in matters that involve possibly little children and their psychological issues. Between 65 and 94% of children that experience gender dysphoria literally grow out of it. And I don't know that for those children, affirming their gender dysphoria is a positive treatment, not for all of them, and not without a consultation with their parents, with their treatment professional, or whatever. I just, I feel sick that a child could have a secret identity at school that we are fully aware of and possibly make accommodations for, beyond using the correct pronoun and name, but also the typical combinations that you hear about with bathrooms, nurse, FISA, and whatever it may be. Look, there's nothing in the policy that even says teenager, high school student, 16, 17, 18-year-old. Maybe I could, maybe I could wrap my mind around that, but purposely, for the state to mandate a policy that literally could be an eight-year-old child, and don't think that's weird, we have TV shows about 10-year-old kids changing their gender. I can't go along with it, so even though it's mandated and we're going to have to pass it, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Any further comments? Take a roll call.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We move on to the HR agenda?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve the resignation of our friend and colleague, Mike Volpe, who's currently the director of human resources here. He will soon assume his new position as assistant superintendent in Princeton Public Schools as their director of HR. We wish him only the very best as he extends his career and his opportunities. Their gain is certainly our loss, and we will miss him. Also, to approve contract change as listed, transfers and changes in assignments, leaves of absences, and the appointments of a teacher, coaches, and substitutes as attached, as well as approved administrative internships, six-period coverage, the preapproval of extra coverage, as well as extra-period coverage approval, approve the revised policy as listed, and to approve the development of the comprehensive equity plan for 2019 and 2020.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second, please, for items 11.1 through 11.12?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Okay. Any questions or comments on the personnel agenda? I'd just like to second Jordan's comments about Mike Volpe. We'll really miss him here. Not only was he our personnel person, but he was also a principal, much beloved in the district for many years before that, and we will be missing him. So, yes, Chris?
Just because I always get harassed about how long ago it was, the first time I was on the board, one of the first administrators, I had the pleasure to be, at the time, we had a personnel committee, one of the first administrators I had the pleasure to go through the interview and hiring process was Mike at Hillsborough Elementary School. So, it was that long ago, and he's done a lot for this district, and we really appreciate everything he's done, and best of luck in Princeton.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of operations, to approve the bills list, monthly financial reports, Somerset County Ed Services Commission Coordinated Transportation Service Agreement, and the non-public agreements for the ESC as well, to approve regulations and policies for first reading as attached, and the resolution for installation of temporary classrooms.
Okay. I will take a motion for items 12.1 through 12.6 of the operations agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Greg. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. It's really a follow-up to the operations discussion on 4219, the commercial drivers' license controlled substances and alcohol use. I think the way I read it with what it is, it sounds like it's a generic CDL license, but for, in our particular case, it applies to bus drivers, transportation personnel. So, I have a, and I realize that this is like a standard boilerplate, but I do have a problem with the references to point alcohol concentration of less than .04. I really do think it should be zero. I mean, I recognize that, like, for CDL licenses, truck drivers, et cetera, like, not great, but it's, they're not transporting children. So, I don't know if that's something that Mr. Lapira could look at or get some input from Strauss Esme, just as to, like, why they have anything greater than zero in this--
Yeah, and it is for first reading, so we have another reading that we can go for, but Mr. Lapira can take a look at that. We did have a quick discussion about what are the minimum levels that would give us a false positive for cough medicines and those type of things. So typically, a zero may have a lot of false positives as a result of it, but we'll research it and get back to you. But this was taken directly from code, from the administrative code in this particular area.
Any other questions or comments on the operations agenda? I'm going to separate out 12.3 and 12.4, so I'll take a first roll call for 12, 1, 2, 5, and 6.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now 12.3 and 12.4, roll call?
We'll take a motion in a second.
Oh, motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm good, Julie.
Okay.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Epstein.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have informational material?
Yes, just the suspension report, and just, Ms. Trillo, just to correct the record, it wasn't administrative code, it was the Omnibus Transportation Employee Testing Act of 1991 that this is taken from.
Okay. We can now go to our second comments from the board public, same rules, just, anything can be discussed.
Again, good evening. Tom Isabella, nine Upper Shanahatchee Court. Just had a quick, two quick things. First, the bank cap, I know I've talked about the bank cap before. Was there ever a consideration in, you know, because the bank cap is mainly there for these kinds of rainy days? Now, I know that, you know, moving forward, you might not have, you know, enough bank cap to sustain maybe the state aid losses moving forward, but was there ever a consideration to look at the bank cap for something like this?
Hillsborough Township Public Schools exhausted our bank cap two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Gillette for his spotlight on that particular agenda item on the transgender students. I am in total agreement with Mr. Gillette. I think it's, and it goes to a broader point. I feel like we are taking less and less, I'm not a parent, but I am a son of a, you know, I'm a son, and I believe strongly in the sense of parental consent and parental involvement beyond this policy. I think that's my biggest concern. It's not the specific policy itself or the issue itself. We can discuss that another day. That's not for here. But for me, it's more so we're taking away the parental involvement, not on just this, but on so many other things, and I think boards like this should stand up, not on the principle of whether they agree with what's written in the policy or not, as it pertains to protections of transgender students and the like, but whether or not parental, you know, parental involvement needs to be there, which I think it should be. I think, you know, everything start, you know, generally, things start at home, and that should be respected, and I feel like the state and the feds, you know, from some years ago, they just run right over and say, oh, well, parental consent and parental involvement doesn't matter because we need to control everything. Well, no, parents do matter, guardianship, and they're, what they believe does matter, and I think sometimes we need, as a board and other, we need to stand up and fight against that. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, Hillsborough Education Association. I would just like to take a moment to thank the board for passing policy that remains current with the needs of our staff, students, and the realities of public schooling, and to the majority of you that passed that, I say thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I'd like to be really clear. The board's responsibility and its code of ethics and everywhere else is first to follow the law that is set by the federal government and the states, and second, to care about the educational welfare of all children regardless of a variety of categories. Schools need to be a safe place for children, and unfortunately, sometimes there's discord between parents and children in regard to the transgender issue, and we need to be a safe place for children. Hopefully, in our situation, we can provide a safe place for children and parents to discuss this very important matter. Yes.
Carl Sarachi, Simonsen Lane. Just moving on to a different topic slightly, is the referendum itself. Just wanted to share my views, you know, with the board and also with the public on that, taking a look at what is being proposed. One is, you know, the full-day kindergarten. I know we like to compare ourselves to our neighbors to the north, in Bridgewater and south of Montgomery. They currently do not have that. That was one of the things I brought up earlier about what might be a nice-to-have, not necessarily a must-have at this point. The other part of it is for, I know, fiscal stability, but that's really a projection out of what future school aid is going to be lost. And again, I know this past school year was definitely, or this current school year is 300,000. That probably would have been a more appropriate amount to go out to the public. If you're projecting any losses for next year, as the law has stipulated, when the elections were moved from April to November, was to go and put that onto a ballot question in November if you projected some shortfalls. And, you know, speaking of that, I think that's also one of the biggest issues I have with this referendum, which I would consider by the dark of night, is that it shouldn't be done in March. I mean, the whole reason why we move, you know, this board didn't move their elections from April to November was for greater voter participation. To me, doing it other than November is a form of voter suppression. I'm surprised how many people I do speak with that don't know that this is even coming up. Not getting the public input, you know, is just, is just wrong as far as I'm concerned, and that's why, you know, I'm publicly stating I'm not supporting that referendum, you know, for those, for those areas. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Salinger, HTA treasurer. I'm a resident of Bridgewater, which is why I just wanted to make a quick comment regarding our referendum and, you know, some of the things that could happen. Bridgewater does not have full-day K, and it's a shame, and I wish we did, but what Bridgewater does have currently is pay-to-play. So, I pay $50 for my child to do newspaper club. I pay $50 for my other child to do student council. I pay $100 for my son to-- I pay $100 for my son to participate on the high school baseball team. So those are realities in other towns, and I wanted people to keep that in mind as we're moving forward regarding the referendum. Thank you.
Steve Monty, Pearson Drive. A statement or question that I have is that we talk about fiscal responsibility and fiscal awareness. It bothered me greatly that I drove past the high school where I live close by, and on July 4th, we had at least 20 school employees putting mulch down. How is that fiscally responsible? You're going to pay double time and a half on a holiday to put mulch down? It would be much cheaper to contract it out to a local landscaper. It'd be a quarter of the price. I don't think that's fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Our guys work really hard, and I think for me to say something would be inappropriate. So it's a personnel matter, and I'm proud of our guys and the work they do.
Thank you. I do want to mention something that another speaker talked about in terms of full-day kindergarten. We talked, in fact, we had a group of kindergarten teachers actually talk about the, the value-added of that investment of our earliest learners for that program. But what we didn't talk a lot about, I think we have talked somewhat about it, is the financial benefits of full-day kindergarten. Right now, the state aid calculation is based upon a per-pupil allocation. So the more kids you have, the more state aid you receive. Our half-day kindergarten is counted as half a student. So we don't receive the full complement of state aid that other districts that have full-day kindergarten do. In fact, after three-year period of time, the difference between our state aid with full-day versus without full-day is close to $3 million, which is what we anticipate the cost of the program being. That's a very important part of this, and it's, it's a complicated matter because SFRA, which is the School Funding Reform Act, is complex in terms of how they do it. But to try to simplify it for people, half-day kindergarten counts students as a half-student rather than a full-student. And by the way, we have about a third of our kids go to a full-day kindergarten program, or don't go to our half-day kindergarten program. So our first-grade enrollments are typically 30% larger than our kindergarten enrollments. So it doesn't just double what we anticipate, the amount of state aid that we would get for kindergarten. It's actually more than that, because we anticipate that those children who are going to a full-day kindergarten program privately will come to a public full-day program. Thank you.
May I, Judy?
Yes.
Sir, I didn't have an opportunity to address your question. We don't have 20 people working in the maintenance department, so that number is off. I don't know where you got that, or 2021. And the second piece that I want to share with you is our maintenance guys are really hard workers. And it, you know, for you to get up there and to say that without knowing the facts of what they contribute, there are times during snow seasons that these guys are up there 24 hours preparing our schools, not getting paid, going home, working double shifts, similar to DPW at the town. I take great pride in what our guys do and how they do it. You don't know the details of what our guys do, so I, it bothered me a little bit that you made that comment without knowing some of your facts. And the idea that bringing out an outside vendor to fix or to do the landscaping, it's something we can look at, but our guys have an expertise in making sure that the safety aspect, that we meet NJA SSI standards when they cut and they mow. So there are reasons why we use our guys. But when you say that publicly about a group of guys that work so hard for this school district, it, it got to me a little bit. So I think we, we could certainly talk offline about the effort. No, we're not going to have a debate, sir. You could sit. This is not a debate. I'm just talking. You could. I'm not going to debate you. Please have a seat. I'm just going to say that I'm proud of our guys, and they're hard workers, and they really work hard for our school district, and I couldn't be more proud of our maintenance staff.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
I was, it's, I've heard a lot of parents say they've been well-informed about the referendum. I was wondering, Dr. Schiff, if you could share how information is being shared with the general public, especially with people who don't have children in the schools.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. We do press releases periodically. We've had articles published in The Patch, in The Tap, in The Beacon. We've had articles on NJ.com, as well as MyCentralJersey.com. I've actually presented at the Township Committee also. I've presented at Senior B, which is a large senior group, and I'll be presenting at Senior A next week as well. And we're trying to get the word out as best as we can. You know, certainly, if you're a parent in the community, you get, you get communication from us. But we're trying to be available to the public, spread the word. Our board meetings are on YouTube, so people that are interested can, can certainly come to a board meeting or see it online. We also have a very comprehensive website. So it's, in fact, let me put it up so that the public can see it real quick. It is https.us. And as you can see, right in the center here, there's a space called Investing in Our Future. And when you click on that, it takes you to a whole list of videos, short clips of video presentations that we've had on every part of this referendum, as well as the information that we're gathering for, for the fall construction referendum. Also on this is information about the senior tax freeze, voter registration information, our work on strategic planning as well, the various press releases that we have, an FAQ, other flyers that are available as well. So we try to make, we try to help the community, the public, make a well-informed decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes? So I have a question about the updated ratables, and whether that information is available for taxpayers to be able to calculate what their personal impact will be from this referendum?
Yes, thank you.
Both Hillsborough and Millstone?
Yeah, our, our business office has been in touch with, with the township, and I believe that a finalized ratable will be available before our next board meeting. So I think our last board meeting before the referendum, we'll be able to publicize that, send that out, send out a press release.
Yes.
I see that our mayor-
Also, I'm sorry, Millstone as well. Jane, Millstone as well will, will be at the same time.
I see that our mayor is in the office and in the audience. And I had suggested at the Education Committee that we have a button on their website that links to our website. But also, when I saw the email from the, from the mayor that went out, his weekly email, it talks about getting registered and has the Board of Elections link on there, but it doesn't supply any information about the referendum, what it's about. So I'm hopeful that more can be done to utilize his email list as well, to send out information about the referendum, maybe the FAQ's or the link to the video. I think it's really important. There's a lot of misinformation out there about the cost of full-day K. Again, this is a program that will more than pay for itself in its, in the third year, more than pay for the difference in the cost of half-day to full-day K. This is also something that is assumed that the 5.3 million above the full-day K, or the $5 million that we're asking above the full-day K, is, the totality is only there because we're expecting a six-year decrease of 5.3 million. And that is not, in fact, the case. Mr. Sarachi, I hope that you listen to this, because this is specifically directed at what your comment was. The 5.3, the $5 million above the $3 million for full-day K is actually not the totality of the $5.3 million decrease in state aid. It is because of surpluses, our fund balance is now dwindled by more than $2 million. It's because of increases in special ed that have been unfunded. It's because of increases in our budget that grow beyond the 2%. If this fails, we would have to ask, and we come back and don't include full-day K, we would have to ask for more than $9 million over the next five years to cover the $5.3 million cut, plus the, all of the other costs that I just said, the increases in special ed and everything else, which expand far beyond 2% every year. So I think we need to do a better job of getting the information out there so that the misinformation that's out there doesn't continue to spread. Because if I thought the same thing, I would vote no as well. But that is not, in fact, the case. The case is that this board is fiscally very conservative, and has cut and cut and cut and not gone to cap, and, and now everything has come back to roost because of expanding costs. So I, I do hope that we use every avenue we can to inform the public exactly why we're going out for this referendum. So thank you.
Judy, can I respond real quick?
Yes.
All right. So as far as not going to cap, it's coming home to roost. I just want to be clear. Since, since we changed the election and we didn't have the vote on the, on the tax levy anymore, we've actually gone to, so, so there were a couple of years in there when we went to 2% tax cap, where we didn't go to cap. But then we went above cap the next year. In other words, we've used absolutely 100% of the cap space since we, since we went to 2% tax cap. Before that, when there was a 4% cap and public was voting on it, yes, there were some years where we only went to 3.5%, 3.4%, whatever it was. We were trying to get the budget to, we were trying to get the tax to pass. So, I mean, that was a calculation that we, that we made. We could have gone to 4%. And the one year where we went, we used some exceptions that went over 4%, it was soundly defeated. We, we tried to get the budget to pass. So I just want to, I just want to say that we, we have used, we hear this trope a lot, that we, that we haven't gone to cap, we don't go to, if you had only gone to cap, then we'd have plenty of money. The years when we, when people were voting, if we didn't go to cap, it's because we were trying to get the, we're trying to get it to pass. Since then, we've gone all the way to cap, beyond, used every waiver, used the complete healthcare waiver. One year when we didn't use the healthcare waiver, we banked some of it. The next year, we used that all up also. Right? So we've take, we've used every single bit of taxing authority that we've had since we've had the 2% cap. If, if you disagree with that now, I'm in.
Why me?
Say it now, because you're the financial expert.
No, we, we did.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear. I wanted you to have even authority, back me up on this. Okay, right?
Yes.
We've used all of our taxing authorities since we've had the 2% tax cap. All right, thank you. That's all.
Yes, Chris?
I think the, the two things I wanted to just, one, to follow on with what Lorraine was saying in terms of costs that are out of our control. You know, one of the biggest hits we take every year is our healthcare premiums. And given that we aren't negotiating our contract every year, at best, one year, we can negotiate around our healthcare plan. But once that negotiation is done, we have two more years where we have to implement that plan at the best price we can get. We have yet to see, and you can correct my math if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we have ever seen since the 2% cap, that the increase in healthcare premium cost to us itself was less than the 2% cap. Right? So, so when you look at, I hear people, I see people on Facebook and people's comments on, on Tap Info and Beacon, how we mismanaged all this. If there's a 2% cap and there's a cost that we have no control over, that goes over 2%, I'm not quite sure how that's mismanagement. I don't know. There are other things that we work on. There are other costs, by the way, we have to also increase. But when healthcare premiums alone exceed the 2% cap, how is that mismanagement on our part? The other sentiment I'd like to address is this concept of a scare tactic. I've seen, heard, not only at board meetings, I've seen again in responses to Beacon articles, Tap Info articles, The Patch, about how this is a scare tactic. Nobody has ever done that, nobody ever would do that. I'm amazed at the short-term memory of people who cannot remember back to, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2010?
Yep.
That we had a similar crisis with state funding, and we had to cut 66 teachers. I'm tired of hearing it's a scare tactic and it's not realistic. Well, sorry, 66 staff. It was not all teachers. But the idea that this is a scare tactic and somehow we would never do it, but we're just saying it because we want to scare people, it's the reality. When you lose that much money in our budget, it's almost impossible not to impact people. And to say that it would never happen, it has never happened, is patently false. And it really annoys me to see in public people making that claim when it's not like this is 50 years ago that this happened, was 2010. I was on the board then, Greg, I think you, I'm sorry, I was on the board, that was before that. But, you know, there are plenty of people that I see commenting who were, who have been around this town and active since before 2010. So to say that this is a scare tactic and we would never do it, and it's not realistic and all this other stuff, it's disingenuous to say that when all you have to do is look back to 2010 and see that the reality is, we had to do it. We tried not to, but when you lose that kind of money, we have to. So please stop with the scare tactic.
I totally agree with Chris. And as Greg can remember, we were on the board at the time, and for me, it was like the worst year of my board life. It was horrible, losing all those people. And I think in many ways, we never recovered from that, because we lost a lot of good people. Our class sizes went up. There was absolutely no question that that was a devastating year for our school system. And again, I don't want to go through that again. And I don't think the town wants us to go through that again. I think the town supports our school system. I think that people recognize that we are $657 per pupil, less than the average school district per pupil cost. That means something. With 7,000 children in our school system, that's $5 million right there. And we've done a great job with the money that we've had. But back in 2010, people were talking about the 2% cap in terms of the costs that were going to go up beyond 2%. And back then, people were saying that this was going to hit the fan. I think it's particularly amazing that it took nine years for that to happen here, which does not speak of all the things that we've cut over the last nine years. All of the innovative things, every single year, the Education Committee looks at a whole bunch of innovative ideas for moving our kids forward. We never get to do them unless it's at the expense of something else. And, you know, then you have an emergency, and you need to hire more counselors, and you need to hire more special ed teachers, because these things are necessary for the health and safety of our children. And where are you going to take that from? There's no place to take it anymore. So, yes, thank you very much for bringing that up.
I'd like to say more, but I wanted to see the mic to Anne right now.
Okay.
I would just like to say that I can speak firsthand on the cuts, because I was, at the time, 2009, 10, I was the elementary science specialist for this district. There was only one, and that job was cut. We lost programs. We lost partnerships with, we lost just a tremendous amount of partnerships with Duke Farms and other entities that we worked with. We also, part of my position was writing grants. Of the 40 grants that I wrote, we had achieved 30 of those. They may have been small, some of them in nature, but they helped to increase our programs, our science, our STEM. And now we're back to square one with those things, because we lost positions, not just mine, but other positions which were in the field of science or math enrichment or improvement programs that would help students. And that was a very sad situation to have to go through as a teacher. The morale in the district is not good when that happens. Sometimes it's necessary, and I think if anyone checked back, I addressed the board at that time and said, I knew that it was necessary, but it certainly didn't help the students. Also, I was reading today an article from the Association of School and Curriculum, and it was a brief about kindergarten classes getting more academic. And this was a survey that was taken of 20,000 kindergarten students across the nation. So if we think that kindergarten full-day is just a frivolous thing that we can do without, we're wrong. This study said that in looking at the students who have kindergarten experience, full-day, they're developmentally prepared to do more. they're developmentally prepared to do more. They do better on their social and emotional metrics like self-control, focus, and behavior. And they have more advanced skills in math, and they displayed stronger interpersonal and attention skills. So I'm reading a lot of things. I'm not just going on what I would like to see the district do. I'm reading research. And I agree with Dr. Sarachi that maybe referendums shouldn't be separate from other board things, but then I question why we have a fire department election in the middle of February, on a Saturday.
Just go figure. Okay. Yes, Chris?
I just wanted to continue on my thought before. I understand that this is, for a significant number of people in this town, this is a very hard decision because of the financial impact for people on a fixed income. I understand that, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for people who take the time to look at the facts and the reality of the situation, regardless of whether they vote for the referendum or not. That's all we can ask for. But I am concerned that people are, the information that's out there and what's going on, people aren't voting based on the reality, they're being based on hyperbole and disingenuous comments, and as I mentioned before, factual inaccuracies. And that's what concerns me. Look, if in the end, the public educates themselves and votes against the referendum, then the public has spoken, and we will do what we have to do to work through that. But that needs to be done by, because people are voting and have done their research, looked at the facts and the reality of the situation, and not just what they read in the newspaper comments and online comments. Thank you.
Well, and I'd like, if you can scroll that up a little bit, we have been having presentations about various aspects of the referendum since August 27th. We have had them at all meetings since then, and they are very, very carefully labeled on our website. So if you don't believe our enrollment dilemma, look at the one called Enrollment. If you don't believe the finances, look at the one on Finances. If you don't, if you want to look at what a modular classroom looks like, that's up there. If you want to hear from our kindergarten teachers about the importance of full-day kindergarten, that's up there. Plus all of our board debate, our endless wonderful board debate. But you could just stick to the presentations if you'd like to. But all the information is up there. I think we've been very transparent in putting all of that information out there. You can only do what you can do about newspapers in this town. It's unfortunate that, you know, our local newspapers are only read a certain amount by a certain number of people. But I have to say, I think it's been a very robust effort to put a lot of information out there, so we need people to read it. And honestly, I got a phone call today from somebody who was asking me about, you know, what about your enrollment? Why do you need a new high school? And I said, November 27th, or whatever the date was, go to the website and look. And she called me back and she said, that's unbelievable. And I said, eh, it is, you know? And I think it's best to take a look at this information without seeing it through a lens of somebody else's opinion. So it's all up there, it's all fact-based, and I hope that people will take the time to look at it because it is a very important decision for our community. Did you have anything else?
I, let Jane, and then I'm going to say something.
I just wanted to, not debate regarding the benefits of full-day kindergarten, but just to address what Dr. Schiff, we actually have a question, clarification of what Dr. Schiff had said about the financial benefits of full-day kindergarten implementing it. I think my biggest concern, and I guess this is a question, is I understand half-day kindergarten kids are counted as half a student, full-day will be counted as, you know, a whole student. The question is, is I'm not convinced that state aid is a guarant, I mean, I understand the formula, the way it works, that it will be counted, et cetera, as of October 15th of that year. But my biggest concern is the state of New Jersey's fiscal budget, et cetera, that they've got a pot of money in which they're allocating to 600 school districts. And I'm concerned that if we were, we are implementing full-day kindergarten based on the assumption that they are going to now increase our state aid, they may change the coefficient, in which case we have now spent the money upfront to implement full-day kindergarten and not generate the funds back. I don't think I heard anywhere that it's a guarantee from the state. And that's, I think that's my biggest concern for the way the referendum is worded.
Let me address that, Jane. It will increase the adequacy budget, and the adequacy budget is part of the law at this point. We're being reduced by $5.3 million. If we do full-day K, we'll be reduced by about $1.3 or $1.4 million over that period of time. So it is a significant, significant difference in terms of our state aid profile. Now, if we were an underfunded district, which we were, by the way, six years ago, six years ago, this district was underfunded by $13 million. Only now, we're overfunded by $5.6 million. At the same time, by the way, that our enrollment remained almost the same, actually went up a little bit during that same period of time. So our state aid issue is very unique. The Senate President and others who have advocated for the removal of state aid from districts are doing so with the argument that at the time that their state aid remained constant, enrollment went way down. And they actually were receiving aid for kids that they don't have. That is not Hillsborough's story. We actually had the same amount of, almost actually a few, a few more than what we had six years ago. The reason that there is this removal of aid or this belief that Hillsborough is overrated is due to a calculation called the wealth calculation, and how much the community has grown in terms of wealth as far as how it's calculated through the state aid funding formula. And those wealth calculations are complicated, and I have spoken directly to the Senate President about this, I've spoken directly to the Speaker of the Assembly about this, I've spoken directly with our Commissioner of Education about these issues, that I challenged them to look and verify that it is actually consistent with the law. Because right now, it's supposed to be balanced between property and income. It's not. It's significantly weighted towards income, not towards property. So there's complexity, there are some districts that are actually suing the state for this very issue. We'll see how that, how that happens. But I can't predict what the state aid is going to be, no one can. What we do know is what the law is now, and the law is a combination of SFRA plus this S2, which is removing adjustment aid from a third of the districts to two-thirds of other districts in the state of New Jersey, representing $600 million of transfer from a third of the districts to two-thirds of the districts. Very serious work.
Jane?
Yes?
I was just going to say, I know we usually don't go back to the public after we begin to end, but I did see that the mayor is here and he did move over by the podium, so I was asking if you could make an exception if the mayor wanted to speak.
Yes, I was waiting for the board, I was waiting for the board to complete its discussion.
Sure, sure.
But certainly, Mayor Delkor, happy to have you here. Welcome.
I just wanted to comment because Lorraine had mentioned the, you know, the links or whatever. I know we had Dr. Schiff come to a meeting a couple of weeks ago and do the presentation. I believe that is linked to the township website. If there are other things that we can provide information out to the public, I'm sure from a township perspective, we could do that.
We appreciate the help. I'll contact Anthony and we'll get some things going. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Chris?
I think it's fair to raise the question about there being no guarantees, but I would say two things to that. One, the reason we're losing the aid is because they're trying to abide by their own laws. So you would hope that in an effort to take our aid according to the new law, they would also apply that new law if our numbers changed. I understand there's no guarantee, and this is New Jersey, so maybe it's not even remotely close to a guarantee. The other thing I would add to that is, well, it's not guaranteed, we have to use something. We can't sit here and throw darts at the wall and hope we come up with a good number. And while that number isn't guaranteed, and certainly I would expect that the odds would be more likely that it would go further against us than for us, there still has to be some benchmark that we use to figure out how to put a plan together. You can't put a budget together unless you have some numbers to project from. So lacking a guarantee, I don't know what better number to use. We have to have a plan that's rational and reasonable based on some input, and that's the only input we have. So while it's not guaranteed, I don't know what else we would use.
Yeah, definitely. Yes, Jane?
I just want to emphasize yet again, this has been said before, I don't know about today, but the state's standards for kindergarten are based on a full day. So it's not necessarily something that, it's not a, you know, it is a need, you know, to satisfy what, so our children are not put at a disadvantage. Also, just in response to some other comments, we really want to avoid pay-to-play because we want to be able to provide opportunities for all of our students to participate in various activities, you know, athletics and extracurricular activities. Whereas, you know, the township, and part of being fiscally responsible for their part, they, you know, especially with sports, they, participants do pay. But we want to be able to provide that opportunity for all of our students. Also, we try to avoid, I think we try to avoid, for the sake of our students and, you know, having an efficiently-run school, all of our schools, is to avoid having too many part-time people. But when you have part-timers, you can get away with not giving them benefits or, you know, health insurance. So that does add more to the cost, whereas that can be done more so maybe in the township. But having said all that, I do know there are some residents that are truly, truly conflicted. I mean, they do value our schools a lot, but it is a hardship for them. And I think we all respect that difficult decision that they have to make. I think none of us judges them that if they do vote against it, that means they don't like our children, they don't respect our schools. No, some of them are truly having to make a difficult decision, and we all respect them for that.
Thank you for bringing that up because I think it's very important that this discussion remain high-minded. And sometimes when you see some of the dialogues in some places in our town, you sort of wonder about that. But yes, we are talking about kids, and we're talking about taxpayers. And we hope that this is a good solution for all of the above.
Can I say something? Joyce?
I want to piggyback off of Jane. The quality of the full-day kindergarten, I know many of the students go to half-day kindergarten in Hillsborough, and then the other half, and then the other half-day, they go to another kind of service. It does not address the curriculum, it does not correct the standard, address the standards. And the students go into first grade with missing a part of what they should have gotten in kindergarten if they had gone to a full-day kindergarten. So I strongly, as you know, believe that a full-day kindergarten is something that the students deserve, they deserve. The students shouldn't have to go to first grade with missing the standards or the instruction or the information, or, and they're identified in kindergarten as well, I should go on to that, too. They're identified if there's an issue with a child, and they go to a full-day kindergarten. When they go to first grade, that information, that teacher ahead of them, the first-grade teacher, or the child study team, they will have that information, and they can go right into that without, without missing a beat. So I strongly believe for many, many reasons that students should have that opportunity to have a full-day kindergarten. This is not like the 50s, this is not like the 60s, it's not like the 70s. Instruction has changed dramatically.
Judy, Joyce? Yes?
Well, to piggyback on what Joyce said, and she was piggybacking on me, so I don't know if that's physically possible, but because we do have some kindergartners that participate in our half-day program and then go to another program that might complete and equal a full-day kindergarten, or those that opt to have a full-day kindergarten private, it's going along with what I said before, I want, I think we want to be equitable, we want to provide that opportunity for all of our students, because there are some parents that cannot afford it. And so just to be fair to our students, we want to have that opportunity for full-day kindergarten. So, thank you.
And I want to say this, if education goes, so does the town. A lot of people move here for the system. They come here for that very same reason. So if something goes awry and they don't have certain things, they all go to other places. And I've seen that happen in other districts.
Very much. Any other comments before I take a break so that we could all stand and shake the alternative as an adjournment? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. That was fast. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.